Kenmore City Council, we'll come to order. We're coming out of executive session. We're re-discussing potential litigation. We are not taking any action. Next on our agenda is a presentation from Joanne Gregory and Chris Fabian about priority-based budgeting. So, this is Gregory.
Is this, is the microphone, okay, it is.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, thank you. Wasn't familiar with this particular microphone. So, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. Not all of you were present in 2014 or on the City Council at that time when we first met Chris Fabian and we were introduced to the concept of priority-based budgeting. Chris, who is a co-founder of the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting in Denver, along with his partner John Johnson, facilitated the City Council's development of Kenmore's results of government and subsequently guided the city staff as we stepped through the very detailed process of developing the city's inventory of programs and evaluating them against those results. The conversations about and the fresh way of looking at the budget through this concept helped us develop the 2015-16 and the 2017-18 biennial budgets. But we feel there's still progress to be made in applying what we have learned about priority-based budgeting and our ongoing goal is to more fully utilize its potential to guide the staff and the council in making well-thought-out choices when allocating our finite resources to programs and activities that best receive the results that we desire for the community. So, with that, I would like to introduce Chris Fabian, who is going to share with you how priority-based budgeting has evolved and how we can continue to enhance Kenmore's budgeting conversations and development.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
All right, is this, this is on?
Uh huh.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody, I'm Chris Fabian and thanks for having me back tonight. I'm presenting at the Transforming Local Government Conference in Tacoma. A conference that's taking place over the next few days and so it was ideal to just get here a day early and have the time to catch up with you because I know through Joanne and Rob's work that you're going through an evolution of the priority-based budgeting process. So, I wanted to take some time to talk about what some of the other communities have been doing with PBB, just to give you a kind of a look down the road of other things that you could be entertaining and also introduce some next steps. I was telling Rob and Joanne, it has been a few years since I've been to your city and my God, what an amazing amount of change has taken place since probably 2014. It's not unrecognizable, but it certainly was delightful and it's sunny. Even that was fantastic. But the growth, the development must be really exciting for you and I mean, it just flat-out looks nice around here. So, very cool, thank you. It's great to be back. So, can everybody see my screen? All right, great. I have, I have three points I'm going to go through today. First, I'm going to start with a survey, a look out over what some of the other communities have been doing with priority-based budgeting because I think you'll find it really interesting. And is this the, is this the type of setting where we could dialogue if they're, okay, great. So, please, as I go through this introductory section to talk about what others are accomplishing, if you do have questions along the way, please jump in because that's, that's part of the point. It's been quite amazing to see what everybody is up to. Second, I know that for some of you, the concept of priority-based budgeting, while it might not be too difficult to understand, you might benefit from a little bit of a refresher. So, I thought I'd go back a little bit just to remind everybody how you got to where you are so that we can get into the third point, which is really to revisit, or at least entertain revisiting, one of the key ingredients of priority-based budgeting, which is what we call results, what you're, what you're here for to accomplish. So, with that agenda, I'll dive right in to this first section and I thought you would, you'd be interested. We're almost at 200 communities. I think when you started, there was probably about 20 or so. So, you were certainly one of the pioneers in this movement of priority-based budgeting, which is fantastic. Back when, when we got started with all this, which I'll describe in the intro section, many communities were thinking about priority-based budgeting because as Joanne mentioned, we needed to take a different look at the budget. It was an effort to try to take the line item budget that we were used to and try to glean from that, what are we really getting for what we put into the budget overall? Fast forward to today with nearly 200 communities, we have our first school district who's going through priority-based budgeting, which is pretty fascinating. It's in the Reno area, in Washoe County, and their partnerships with the city of Reno have really opened our eyes to the types of partnerships that schools and local governments can actually accomplish. So, that's been quite fascinating. Here locally, while you were among the first, Bainbridge Island as well, Tacoma, Washington has started to follow your lead, Toquilla, Clark County to the south, and then generally within the region, city of Salem, Oregon is just underway, Springfield, Tuolton in Oregon as well, Boise's done a great job in Idaho and a few other communities there too, and even there, that's Lethbridge, north of the border into Canada. And while you were among probably the first 20, what's been really intriguing for us is to see that more and more local governments are, are looking in your direction to see what they could accomplish with an outcome-driven budget process. It seems pretty logical. Here's a budget process that focuses on what you're getting, your return on investment, and, and many organizations seek to achieve something similarly. This is from Route 50. If, if you follow, Michael Grass actually, who's editor, lives here in the Seattle metro area, and it's a local government publication. I don't know, are any of you familiar with Route 50? It's, it's a pretty good magazine overall, digital. And their 2018 management survey at the beginning of the year, published from their survey results, that 75% of local governments are looking towards priority-based budgeting. And that's exciting for us, but it makes us question as well, what are they hoping to accomplish? When we first started this, it was truly a reaction to the Great Recession and we wondered, you know, once we overcame those particular challenges, if we ever do, would communities still want to implement PBB? And to see this, this trend is pretty intriguing. And so, as I do get started, I was hoping to share with you some reasons why we're finding that communities continue to look at PBB. And this is a slide we put together to try to capture what today's organizations are going through. I'm an engineer, so I think in blueprints anyway, but this is, this is a caricature or a depiction of, of most every community that we work in today, where we kind of start over here on the left-hand side, that even for those communities who are not in a budget crisis, they're looking towards the future and realizing that they have new needs, much like you here, where you envision some sort of a future where you have new programs that you may wish to start and you have current programs that somehow you're going to probably need more money to continue to sustain them. And the, the challenge is, how are you going to do that? We do have some communities down here, you see, that, that truly believe that they do not have any new needs, they look towards the future and they're just fine. And that's hard enough just to preserve the status quo of what you're doing without actually envisioning new services or enhancing current services and that's totally okay. But for most of us, we're looking out towards this future, imagining, you know, tremendous new programs that we might have to get into. And our two levers to, to go after that, to fund that, that future include doing better with what we already have, somehow trying to free up resources from what we have today and reallocate towards those new programs or enhance the services that we provide, or perhaps at some point, being able to generate new revenues overall. So, the, the use of priority-based budgeting really involves trying to turn over every possible opportunity for that resource reallocation. And it's pretty dramatic to see what's going on. I'll go into some of these stories. Everything from looking at partnerships or sourcing options, program efficiencies, or even service levels where you're tapping into other program providers to take things off of your plate in order to free up your own people and money to redirect towards the new services that you may wish to get into. And then down on the revenue side, always an option to make sure that the programs where we have fees coming in for service or rates, that those are paying for themselves and ultimately, that opportunity perhaps to look for taxes. By the way, congratulations on your bonds. That was fantastic, too. That, that is meaningful. We have a lot of communities that use PBB to establish trust in their community, to demonstrate that they're looking for every possible way to maximize the use of their own resources before they go out to the citizens again to ask for additional resources. But when it, when it works, that's a testament to the type of culture and community that you've built because we certainly see it the other way around. So, congratulations, that's pretty cool. In terms of describing this blueprint and the accomplishments of other PBB communities, I wanted to put a framework on it and I'll describe it in terms of what we call the, the four levels of priority-based budgeting mastery these days. And I'll walk you through each of these steps, not taking up an exorbitant amount of time, but to give you a flavor for all of these different types of motivations and skills and applications of PBB. Starting with step one, this, this approach to priority-based budgeting as a rational tool to stabilize the budget, that's essentially where we met you on your journey when you first started and this is why we invented it in the first place. We never envisioned there would be another need for priority-based budgeting besides some other rational tool to stabilize the budget. Again, taking you back, when we first created this, it was, it was a reaction to the Great Recession and when we had a budget shortfall to deal with, it was awfully difficult to take our line item budget and ascertain, where are we going to cut? How are we going to make ends meet? And how are we going to get agreement, not only amongst ourselves as finance professionals, but among our elected leadership, our department heads, and ultimately, our citizens? And this was the, the first motivation. Just one of the communities that has really taken a fantastic look at step one here, the Scott County, Minnesota, they renamed their budget book Delivering What Matters because that's what really jumped out at them from their PBB work. As you can see, and as you have accomplished as well, every dollar in your budget through priority-based budgeting is associated with a program and every program is scored relative to results, what matters ultimately, so that you can understand how your resources are aligned with those results that you're really trying to accomplish. And this is a portrayal of the budget ultimately. Through Scott County's work, they have gained the attention and the confidence of the bond rating agencies and standard empeurs. This has happened with a lot of communities. Standard empeurs and Moody's have come to recognize priority-based budgeting as a really transparent way of understanding every resource connected to every program, every program connected to every result overall. If you remember back during the Great Recession, a lot of local governments were struggling to even maintain their bond ratings and many of them were, were facing significant downgrades. And the reason, while most communities, save a few who went, you know, filed for bankruptcy, while most communities were able to balance the budget using tactics like across-the-board budget cutting, doing whatever we had to do to survive, it was impossible to understand the consequences of the types of decisions that we were making. So, you could achieve a balanced budget without really knowing what were the programs that we were impacting. And through PBB, standard empeurs and Moody's have come to appreciate the attention that you can pay to reducing certain services as well as increasing other services and the connection overall to the results that you're trying to accomplish in a responsible manner. So, for, for Kenmore, you two, you're here. You very much accomplished level one, if you will, by achieving a very stable budget and being able to understand your resource allocation towards the results that you're trying to achieve. I think what's exciting for you, and we'll get to this later in the presentation, is, is when you think about these results in your future, is this where you want to be? And these will be part of the, the spirit of the conversations that you can get into, how much is really going towards your results and where you want to go next. So, with, with step one, stabilizing the budget, we always wondered, would anybody continue to do priority-based budgeting? Once you stabilize the budget, what else are you going to do with it? We thought we'd be in the business of helping to stabilize budgets and that'd be a great thing. But we did have some communities that even with a stable budget, still were confronted with this picture of the four quartiles and wondering, could they do better with the resources that they had? This is a picture of Boulder, Colorado. They're now eight years into their implementation. I think most of you are familiar with what this visualization means, but just in case I will go through it and then we'll go through it in even greater detail in the explanation of Kenmore's journey. But we have these four quartiles. It's a depiction of every dollar associated with every program you provide and the programs that accomplish your results to the highest degree are what we call quartile-one programs, as opposed to quartile-two programs, which are also highly influential, just not as influential as quartile-one, as differentiated from quartile-three, and ultimately quartile-four, where it's not as if quartile-four programs are, are bad, it's a relative distribution. It's just everything compared relative to everything else that you provide. So, by definition, something has to be in quartile-four. By definition, something has to be in quartile-one and it's a relative distribution of, of your programs by relevance. So, here in Boulder, what you're looking at, when they started, that's what you see here in blue, their, their spending array was already in pretty good shape with the vast majority of their resources going towards quartile-one, some in quartile-two, a little bit in quartile-three and very little in quartile-four. But over the years, again, even with a stable budget, what you're seeing is the growth here in green, they've used PBB as a lens to evaluate every new program that they wish to start or growth in other programs and they've really focused that growth at the quartile-one and quartile-two level over eight years. You see, they have grown quartile-three. It's not against the law, it's not against any philosophy of priority-based budgeting, but what they've done is, is pretty novel. They've said, if we are going to grow a quartile-three program, something that has relatively less influence on our results compared to everything else that we do, we should make sure that they pay for themselves. So, these programs are funded by rates or charges, the users wish to grow them or they're bringing grant dollars to fund those programs overall. So, that's a great use of PBB. And then down in quartile-four, you can see, not only did they cap growth, but they've begun to mine away about $2 million in, in their operating budget. That is literally taking people off of fourth quartile programs, not filling vacancies or taking talented staff and reallocating them towards programs that they wish to start or grow, getting their time out of Q4 programs and pushing it towards quartile-one or quartile-two. At its most practical level, this is Chandler, Arizona, you can get down to each individual staff person and so what they've done, which is pretty cool, is apply that exact same style of thinking to any person who leaves the organization, to their succession planning overall. So, here's a, a city communication coordinator where you can see their time allocation by program, by quartile. And so, they're working on every single position in the organization, trying to say, you know, in this person's case, can we free up 65% of their time where it's dedicated to quartile-three and quartile-four programs where they care about the staff person, it's a valuable resource, but they can get more out of that person overall. Does that make sense to everybody? So, really, really practical things down to the employee level in that organization. This has been pretty cool. For anybody who has followed Michael Bloomberg's work in What Works Cities, he's put a substantial amount of resources into trying to create 21st century local government. What he means by that is, is a local government driven by outcomes, it's outcome-based, driven by data to improve the lives of citizens overall. And they're, they're certifying organizations and trying to replicate best practices and we've had a great relationship. Many PBB communities have in fact become What Works Cities organizations and they've incorporated this whole idea of resource reallocation and programmatic review into their certification process overall. So, I know, Rob, we've talked about this a little bit, that Bloomberg's What Works Cities program is, is starting from very large organizations and they're kind of working their way across the United States, trying to provide grant funding, but we'll continue to keep an eye on this to see if there's ever a chance that you can qualify for those grant dollars as well.
Well, speaking of which, is, is that, is the What Works related at all to the evidence-based policy work as well? Is that the same?
There's a lot of organizations talking about evidence-based policymaking, but What Works Cities is certainly espousing that value system. Is that helpful?
Okay. I mean, there's a whole, like, literature around that evidence. I mean, yeah, okay, okay.
From my understanding, What Works Cities, Sunlight Foundation, Knight Foundation, Ford Foundation, there are, there are a lot of really great organizations using these terms like evidence-based policymaking. So, I don't want to make, I don't want to pretend I'm referencing what you are, but it's related.
Yeah.
Cool. And I would simply say, as you've also been implementing over the years, you too can see your resource reallocation in your multi-year attempt at this with, you know, a lot of focus going towards quartile-two and quartile-one, but also holding steady on quartile-three and quartile-four. And so, you, you have, just like the other organizations, been focused on resource reallocation and doing the best with what you have, definitely showing evidence of, of achieving this level-two mastery. So, again, you kind of think, well, once you get good at the resource reallocation game, where else might you go? And level-three communities are, are pretty fascinating. So, you understand PBB for what it is. It's a very simple tool, resources aligned with programs, programs scored against results. And it ultimately begs the question back to you, back to this community, towards what results are you really hoping to push your resources towards? You know, what really matters? If PBB is just this kind of simple engine to take resources, free them up and push them towards results, what are you going for? So, I take you to Kalamazoo, Michigan, they've taken this really seriously and, and they're excited about it, so they're asking this exact same question. And one of their results that has come on the table is ending generational poverty. So, they're using priority-based budgeting to free up as much as they can, where it makes sense, to push towards these programs that they want to start and they, and they don't know what's, what it's going to take to end generational poverty. Nobody does, but they're working on this. They're trying to identify programs, something thoughtful and experimental, to try and churning up money and people to start these new programs to try and accomplish this goal overall. It'll be very interesting to see what, what takes place. We had our annual conference last year in Denver and someone from Kalamazoo, their version of Joanne, her name is Stephanie McGowan, she was really interesting to talk to because she said, "It's not what the city is used to. They're not used to having a tremendous amount of new money to go tackle a problem, a challenge of their future." In local government, sometimes we are, we have this feeling of, of sort of being boxed in. I don't know what your experience is, but you, you don't face these situations where you all of a sudden have a windfall of ongoing resources that it was made possible by churning up the resources that they already have. And so, you don't, you condition yourself not to think big, or we, we sometimes condition ourselves not to really think towards the massive challenges that we might try to tackle. But this is what Kalamazoo is starting to get into, which is pretty exciting. Their city manager, their version of Rob, Jim Ritzma says, "I've been preparing budget, budgets for 20 years." This is quote, which we loved. This is December, just towards the end of the year. I mean, I think you all know this sort of feeling. You, you prepare the budget, you go through this exercise, you, you do your absolute best to take it absolutely seriously. Budget is the way to translate your policy into action through the language of, of finance. And Jim here is saying, "I've been doing this for 20 years, but finally, I'm preparing a budget that is as exciting and forward-looking than anything I've presented in my past." And Jim really believes that and we're excited for him to see them really pursue these massive objectives overall. Scott County, back to them, they're trying to tackle ending homelessness. And again, if you talk to Steve Jones, their finance director, it's not that they have the answers on what it's going to take to end homelessness, they're just excited they can free up the money to try to go after that problem with, with vigor. And again, with, with you guys, and this is just one example, but I think it's really cool to see the kind of, of programs that you're looking at and something like Target Zero is an example of these types of, of massive problems that are in the realm of local government. There's nobody else who's out there who's going to start a program, nobody in the private sector, maybe someone in the public sector or another nonprofit, but you're chasing after these problems and you're using your resources in a way. I read the 2017 update on, on the report and that's exciting. It's really exciting what you're doing. This just being one example of something that we're able to see quite easily. And again, this whole mantra of, how are we going to do it? We have to free up what we have to pursue those, pursue those problems. And finally, probably the craziest communities that we're working with, I say that in a very positive way because it's, it's exciting to see what they're doing. So, you imagine, all right, you have a stable budget, you begin to understand resource reallocation, maybe you even pursue the, the big-time results that matter most to your community. And then it dawns on you, but you are one organization among many in this community, even in, in Kenmore, and you can optimize within the confines of City Hall and do marvelous things, but what happens when you can even broaden your view and understand there are other potential providers out there with whom you might be able to partner? And if you can tap into those resources, it's almost as if you're growing your organization without growing it, you know, truly. You're not adding to your budget, you're bringing on force and aligning others who are trying to achieve the same things that you are. And we have some great examples of this and organizations will make sure that, that you're able to see their stories. This is Washington County, Wisconsin, they're outside of the Milwaukee area in West Bend. And just like you, they came up with a program inventory, program cost, they went through priority-based budgeting and they took their data and they shared it with four neighboring counties. So, none of the other organizations had gone through PBB, but as the county, they said, "Here's the list of services that we're doing, do you guys offer anything similar to what we're providing?" And they have dozens of, of program examples, probably the biggest and easiest one to understand. They merged public health departments with a neighboring county. So, Washington County had a public health department and their neighbors did as well. When they merged them together, they identified duplicative positions. They didn't lay off anybody, but they eliminated those positions overall, thereby freeing up a bunch of human resources who they could then reallocate to start new programs without actually having to increase taxes. Programs that neither one of the entities on their own would have been able to start without increasing taxes, now together an emerged shared service organization, they're able to do that overall. So, I mean, that's the spirit of, of a shared service, of a merger or a consolidation, which is pretty cool. And, and even in Wisconsin, I should say as well, where there is immense pressure on downsizing government, they're able to do this without raising taxes and adding to their ability to serve the public, which is exciting, no matter what side of the political spectrum that you, that you fall on. City of Toledo, very similar story, but instead of partnering with public sector organizations, they are reaching out directly to the business landscape in Toledo. So, if you're not familiar, Toledo was really hit hard by the Great Recession. They're about 45 minutes outside of Detroit and the ramifications of the downfall of the auto industry during the Great Recession, it really had a tremendous impact on a lot of businesses in Toledo. So, the city government reaches out to the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce actually funded half of their priority-based budgeting implementation, which is pretty wild as well, just to see that public-private partnership take place. And the city is saying to the chamber, "Here is our list of programs, here's our program inventory and our, and the cost for providing them and the quartile rankings. Do you, in the private sector, provide anything like the services that we do? Would you be able to take programs? Do you have an offer on the table? Would you like to partner with us? Would you like to take over a particular service?" And what's really cool about it, they, they are calling this government as a platform, which is not their invention. This is a, a really interesting concept and PBB is having a nice intersection with it. But city as a platform, government as a platform is a, something to look up as well. The idea is that if, if Toledo businesses can take on certain programs that are not in the sole purview of, of local government responsibility, then the city can free up its own people and its own money to redirect towards other programs overall. Now, they have to be very cautious at this. This is, their objective is not to privatize government. That's not the, that's not the goal. The goal is to find appropriate situations where a partnership could occur. For instance, the city does street sweeping, the city does leaf collection. If, I'm not sure if you guys do leaf collection here, but in Toledo, if you rake your leaves, if you rake your leaves from your yard to the side, the city will come around and bag them and put them in the truck and take them away and it's just a public service. Very nice to live in Toledo. But this is something that if the city is figuring out, maybe they don't have to be in the business of providing that and could they free up their own people, their own equipment to chase after other programs overall? And then finally, here's Little Moffett County. So, Toledo's doing what they're doing and Moffett County is looking at these examples. They're in Colorado. Has anybody heard of Moffett County or been there before? Yeah, I'm always looking for one person, but I have not found it. I have been there and it is in northwestern Colorado. It's pretty remote. There's about 15,000, maybe less, people who live in, in all of Moffett County. And they're watching the Toledo story and they're watching the Washington County story and their leaders, in your position, said, you know, "We really like this idea of partnerships. Can we do something similar here?" And we thought, you know, 15,000 people have a $30 million budget for the entire county. We weren't sure if they would actually have partners where this would make sense and there's not a whole lot going on. And nevertheless, their county, Board of County Commissioners organized a group of the county seat, City of Craig, their local school district, their community college, a regional hospital. I think there's four or five players overall. And again, they did this simple program matchup. They, Moffett County shared their program inventory. We're 30 minutes into the exercise and the hospital CEO is looking at Moffett County's service inventory and service inventory and says, "Do you really do laundry services in Moffett County?" The hospital CEO obviously has a large mandate to do a ton of laundry in the hospital, not realizing that there's anybody else in town to take on that workload, shipped his laundry two and a half hours to another city, Grand Junction, spending several hundred thousand dollars in the laundry budget for the hospital, again, just simply not realizing that there's anybody in town who did it. The county said, "Yeah, in our detention center, we have a pretty massive laundry facility going on." But it was just unknown. And the epiphany for us is, even within your own communities, I mean, of course you know what goes on within Kenmore. You know the businesses, you license them. But when it comes down to what are the programs that they actually do, what we're calling program mapping, taking your inventory and mapping who are your nonprofits, who are your private sector businesses, what do they do, is the simplest step to be able to understand where these partnership opportunities could occur. So kind of in a wrap-up in this first section, you think about the future. And whatever you're trying to deal with, this is the conference that we're going to speak at over the next couple of days, resource trends, climate change, water shortages, growth and development, like you're going through. Overall, we have many of our communities talking about trying to bridge the gap between the haves and the have-nots and creating an economically inclusive community. So many of our organizations are tackling homelessness issues or opioid epidemic or public safety or Target Zero, like you are. Our ability to continue to adopt this philosophy, even when you don't have a budget to cut, but how much can you reallocate? How can you tap into the partnerships that you have to free up resources? We have the Toledos and the Moffett Counties with a stated goal of 10% to 20% of their resources they want to free up to start the programs that are really needed. Benicia, California, city manager Lori Tinfoil is a third organization she's done priority-based budgeting in, and she's realizing in Benicia, it's San Francisco Bay area, there's nobody else but government that's going to focus on sea level rising issues. How can we get into these businesses and at the same time tap into those in our own community to share in the workload overall? That's a pretty exciting place to be. So that's an overview of what other communities have been up to these days in priority-based budgeting. And before I get into that next section, I just wanted to see how that resonated and if these are the kind of things that are interesting to you or take any questions before I move on. And it'll give me a chance to take a drink.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. You mentioned you pulled out like Target Zero out of what we, one of the things that we've done here and how we made that a priority. I'm curious, when you're looking and reviewing how we've implemented it, do you see any significant changes or things that you look at and you either question why we're doing it or think that maybe that's a trend we can put more emphasis on? I'm just, I'm curious what you're, kind of from the macro view, when you look at how we have implemented, are there any things that, anything that sticks out or kind of catches your eye and you either question it or you think, wow, that's a great, great implementation of what we intended?
I'll tell you what caught my attention. In the spirit of like Benicia figuring out that there's nobody else who's going to tackle sea level rising issues, and they're going to, they're going to have to be the ones. There's no private sector company that says, "You know what? I'm going to get into this business." That's what we look for, are what are those challenges that are kind of unique unto government? And why do we do that? If you read some of the literature today, they reflect back on local government from 1950s and so many of the programs and services that we got into at that time were because there was nobody else around who could provide those types of services. And you fast-forward to today and there are nonprofits and there's private sector and sometimes there's a redundancy, a layering of organizations trying to provide the same type of service, leaf collection in Toledo or something like that, or street sweeping. And it seems very bizarre that we have to straighten this thing out, but it's just a ramification of what started in the past and what you're trying to correct today. When we see local governments tackle today's problems that nobody else is going to get into the business of trying to tackle, there's not going to be a private sector company trying to tackle a Target Zero. And it tends, it is an issue here from what we can read. Public safety, taking care of pedestrians, trying to encourage a more sustainable community by at least, you know, having a place where bike riders can take advantage of your beautiful setting. It seems like a unique challenge here in Kenmore that you're trying to push resources towards to correct. So we think it's really fantastic when we see those types of examples where it's clear that, you know, there's probably not another type of organization who's going to get into it. That's what's inspiring to us. So you've got to figure out, back to Funding the Future, how do you free up the resources to really solve that problem? It's good that you're aware of it. It's cool that you've started programs to actually try to tackle it, and you're pushing resources towards it.
Right, thanks. I do have one more unless somebody else had a question.
Go for it.
Since the, I remember the learning curve on this program was pretty steep right at the very beginning. There was just a lot of new stuff and it, just the way you kind of think about things. And obviously on the staff end there was. I'm curious to know, because I recall most of it, but is there anything significantly that changed in how you program the functionality of what this is and how you teach it or educate municipalities on it?
That's a great question, too. One is a simple thing to describe. We created a technology company to ease the implementation. That was something we decided we needed to help out in for the movement to actually keep traction was for communities to use our initial spreadsheets was going to be cumbersome, to say the least. And so we were a threat to our own viability as a mission for the long term. So we tried to fix that internally. Now externally, something like the four levels, we've had to stay on the forefront of where communities can really take this. I admit to you, when we first launched this and first wrote about it back in 2008 for the International City County Management Association's Journal, we never envisioned, I didn't speak for myself, that there would be a Toledo, Ohio, trying to facilitate this incredible conversation with the private sector. It was not in the, it was not in our long-term vision overall. It's just been a natural evolution. So as we teach it, back to what you're, I think you were asking, it's a value system, it's a philosophy to say, where does local government need to go? We believe that there is certainly a, well, Ted Gable and David Osborne and Peter Hutchinson talked about reinventing government. And now there is a discussion of kind of a rebirth of the very role of government in a community that is so important. And it's not about the private sector does it better or anything like that. It's about what is the space that government needs to be in where you're going to be tackling these problems of tomorrow? And that's what we're having to teach. And that's what's really exciting, is how can you position yourself so that of all of these services that you provide, the pressure is not on you perhaps to hold on to everything, to hold on to a portfolio of 500 services, but to really figure out there's some things that you might be able to get off of your plate. And it's okay if you can free up the people and the money to redirect them towards these challenges of tomorrow. And that is something to teach. That's a different way of thinking about government. Sure.
Councilmember Curtis?
I remember one of the early discussions was, these are all programs. And another big way we spend money is capital improvement projects and how we would incorporate those two major ways of spending money. So how successful have you been to get the whole budget pie into this PBB?
Well, I credit you guys and Joanne and Rob as well for being among the first to even ask the question. And so I believe that your capital projects are loaded to be able to score them, put a price tag on them. And so we had to develop a methodology. How would we do it? So projects analogous to programs can hold a cost and then also be scored against the results that make them relevant. So that has been a part of your implementation, too.
Your honor, if I could add something to that. So we were able to score capital programs against themselves, but I think the next step we'd like to take it to this next budget cycle is to score capital projects against the rest of the budget. So I think that's where we're trying to go next cycle, right?
Yeah, that's true, because in some cases, they compete for the same resources that operating expenses are using. So it's logical that you would try to balance those resources and direct them towards the best outcome, whether it's a capital investment or an operating need.
It doesn't work perfectly because some revenues can only be spent on capital, like real estate excise tax, impact fees. So you can't get a pure, you know, resource comparison with it, but you can, it's still good to go through the exercise and there are some revenues that are shareable between capital and operating.
Councilmember Smith?
Actually, city manager just addressed the restricted revenues. Thanks.
Do you have any other questions?
All right. Chapter two. So I did want to go back a little bit just to refresh everybody's memory on how this all came together in the first place. And again, questions along the way, totally great. I just wanted to make sure everyone's operating from the same base as you start to think about those other four levels. How this all came together, and I appreciated the point about program-level thinking, what are programs? The first component is what we call program budgeting, and that is just coming up with that list of programs overall and allocating your line item budget to those programs. And I should have written there as well, programs, comma, projects, because that's exactly what you've done, too, is to identify projects, put a price tag on those and score them. And it's this overlay of results, what you're really trying to do with the resources that you have that rounds out what priority-based budgeting is all about. And I inserted this because Tacoma has implemented program budgeting. We do have a lot of, a few organizations across the country that are simply implementing the program inventory and the program cost to at least understand what is, what is it that they do and how much does it cost them to do what they do as a clear phase one? You guys are in a different league by having implemented the entirety of priority-based budgeting. Program budgeting in and of itself is also a best practice because a lot of local governments don't have that list of the programs that they provide, let alone their costs overall. So the three basic questions we've been trying to answer are, why are we in business? What is it that we do? And what does it cost us to do what we do? Or the vernacular of priority-based budgeting, what are the programs that we provide? How much does it cost us to provide those programs? And how do those programs relate to the outcomes or the results that we're trying to achieve? So a quick, a quick review of these ingredients, when you did come up with this program inventory, that's a much too complicated word for, you know, what is it that you do? What do you offer? What do you provide to the citizens and what do you offer within this organization? And this is kind of washed out on the screen. I hope it's a little clearer on your computers. But the question still remains, what is the right program size for you? What's too big? What's too small? And I think we've seen, as communities evolve their work over the years, you continue to find areas where the programs might have been defined too small in the first go-around or conversely, where they were too big and you want to break them up. So what we've learned over the years is that there's still not a complete right definition for this. In Clark County, they identified a program strategic planning that had .02 FTE allocated to it. And we said, geez, that's really small. You know, why would you want to keep track of a program like that? And they said, in their conversations with their board, the board was less than impressed with their level of strategic planning and they really wanted to see more take place. And from the staff's point of view, they could at least communicate now, part of the reason that you might not be so impressed with our strategic planning is because we only have .02 FTE dedicated to it. If we want to really put more resources into that program, maybe we can do more. And that's been really interesting to have that type of a conversation. Probably where the right level of program definition has come into play is in the comparisons. So you being among the first 20, this was not interesting to you back then, but now with almost 200 organizations, we have something around 90,000 programs in the database. So 90,000 local government programs to compare to. So that's going to be something new to be able to say, well, you know, here's what pothole repair looks like in your organization. Or is there anybody else doing Target Zero or anything like it by program name, program definition? You can look at program costs across the database. You can ask, does anybody else charge for this program? So for you as policymakers, that's one of the neat things about having more and more data in the tool is if you're thinking of starting a program and you want to see how it's worked out in another organization, maybe it's a, well, you had prescription pill drop-off program. And other organizations have looked to yours to be able to see, how much does that really cost? And do you get a grant for it? Do you recover your cost for that type of a program? So you can scan across the database and see what's taking place there. So that's something I wanted you to be aware of, too. The second step was putting a cost on programs. And so for everything that you provide, you also have a total cost, a budgeted cost, an allocation of staff resources and an allocation of your non-personnel line items, FTE count, fees and charges. Bless you. And the way that we got there, and this is a better illustration of what you've been able to do with your capital costs as well, we made this distinction between ongoing programmatic costs that are more personnel and ongoing recurring non-personnel costs and differentiating your more one-time costs that are capital projects, debt service. And just as you've done, you can prioritize those capital projects, but it's those ongoing costs that get associated with the program inventory overall. But everything ties back ultimately to where you started. What goes in must come out. It's the line item budget. Another thing that we'll be talking about is a way to portray those one-time costs and those ongoing costs compared to ongoing revenues and one-time sources, primarily fund balance and grant dollars and sources of income, maybe interest income that are not recurring. So we can talk about that, too, in the overall projection. But what this was able to lead to for you guys, and I know this is really small, which is unfortunate because it's kind of a good story here. This is a picture of, this Pac-Man up here is your community-oriented spending. We made this distinction, there are resources aligned with programs, community-oriented programs that face your citizens directly, they serve them. And then there are the programs of governance, which are internal to the organization. They keep the lights on, they keep the organization running. So governance could include things like Joanne's office, Rob's, Fleet, IT, HR, those internal programs overall is differentiated from external programs, if that is helpful overall. And your ratio was something like, and we can pull up your model here towards the end, it looked like it was about 85 to 15 or 86 to, 86% to 14%. 86% of your resources going towards community-oriented programs directly serving the citizens is differentiated from about 14% to run the organization. And that's a really good metric. So that's another thing, at this point, nearly 200 communities, we see on average, it's a lot closer to 80/20. So for you to be on the slimmer side of things is certainly an indicator that you're operating the organization in a lean way from an internal governance standpoint. So something happy to share that with you. I think we've told the story before. We had one community, Humboldt, Saskatchewan, if you're familiar, I think Gordy Howe is from the area. And they had governance that was closer to 8% overall. And we thought, wow, that's incredible. You must be so lean, you know, what are you doing to remain so efficient? And their city manager said, no, we've gone way past being lean. This is, we're starved from an internal perspective. The city manager is doing help desk calls and the buildings are falling apart and we don't have any money to replace fleet. So you do reach a point, they said, of no return or, you know, it's not healthy anymore. It's malnourished, so to speak. So, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah. On that issue, I remember we talked about this and the fact that we're a contract city and that, but I don't recall exactly what the result of it was of the discussion, but when you, now that you have a lot broader data sample to look at all these other municipalities, do you see, is there any trend in where those ratios lie for a contract city versus a full-service city?
And you are, from our work, keep in mind, even near 200 local governments, there are something around 90,000 local governments across the United States. So ours is still a sample size of probably the most progressive, pioneering organizations. And among our subset, you are one of the few who's a contract city as you are. We have some who contract various services to some degree, some lesser, some more than others. But you are among the few that we've worked with that are as contracted as you are. Yeah. I can easily say that your ratio of community to governance compared to everybody else, which is a fair comparison, your governance is small compared to the amount of resources going in to support those programs compared to other communities in our database overall. Cool. So the way that we get there, and again, this is a little washed out, hopefully clear on your screen. on your screen, is that every FTE, every staff person allocates their time to the programs that they serve. This is an example, this is not you, but I wanted to show this for something else that might be interesting to you. So this is Toledo, and this is a residential permits program that they have. And so I think you can see that, I'm using the cursor to point out how they got to the cost. This is 291,000. And you can see they got there because they allocated their staff, there's a plans examiner, permit technician, clerk specialist one, clerk specialist two. This clerk specialist two spends 30% of his or her time on that program and therefore 30% of their time, of their fully loaded personnel costs get allocated to the program, whereas 50% of this clerk specialist one and 100% of this plans examiner gets allocated to the program. So this is what, this is how we got to these costs overall. And then over here on the non-personnel side, these are office supplies, postage and the print shop that the residential permits program uses. So here's Toledo, and they're looking out at this line and they're saying, you know, it's a quartile one program, we have this line out the door, quartile one, if I've taught you anything, is high priority. So they're saying, why don't we staff up? You know, what's going on? Or are we charging enough to support this program? And so you can drill into that. So here's residential permits, 291,000, here's that total cost. And we can look at the program revenue, which they did, and you can see, well, this bar is taller than this bar by a long shot. So it's 652,000 of fees coming in compared to 291 to run it. And so from council perspective, again, they're saying, well, if we're bringing in that much revenue, why don't we hire a few more clerk specialist ones and cut down on this line? And the answer was, over here on commercial inspection side of the house, here's a $477,000 program, and the fees coming in, this little bar, 4,000 bucks, the rest is subsidized. And the response back from staff was, well, we thought we've been hearing from council's perspective that you want to make things easier on our businesses. The way we've been able to do that is to keep their rates really low. And the only way we've been able to provide a good program with this low of a rate is to actually charge a profit or make a profit on the residents to come over and subsidize the commercial side of the house. So it wasn't like criminal that they were doing it, it was just, that's the difference between policy sometimes and how it gets translated into the programs and the fee structures, in Toledo's case overall. So I think it'd be really interesting, as you continue to evolve your work on the program revenue side of the house, is to take advantage of the fact, we have many organizations looking at all of their fees and charges, and just saying, you know, we now have a good approximation of the cost of running the business. What do our fees look like compared to the programs that we're providing? Ensuring, especially for lower priority programs, remember the Boulder story? Quartile three programs, they said, they're fine growing them so long as they're paying for themselves. So that same tactic, if you have a lower priority program, quartile four, quartile three, that has a revenue associated with it, really making sure that those programs are 100% paying for themselves if you can, it's a policy discussion. Whereas if it's quartile one, quartile two, it can be wise to subsidize a higher priority program because you're using the general government resources to fund programs that have the utmost influence on results overall. Anyway, it's a, it's a good conversation on the fee side of things. And then from a line item perspective, this is from your data, you can drill into your line items, and I think this is also really cool. So it's not that priority-based budgeting got rid of the line items, they're just associated now with these things called programs. So what I've done here, this is discretionary overtime. And these are the programs that drive that cost. And you can look at every potential program that actually has overtime associated with it. And we've had organizations use this to be able to say, is it wise in this case to continue to fund it the way that we're doing? Or is it, is the trade-off, should we hire staff to try to minimize the overtime overall? You know, what can we do about this particular line item? Here was postage. And from my perspective, when we invented this in the first place, the traditional way of talking about these types of line items was to say, postage, you know, how can we get rid of the postage cost? And we tried to transition every single service online, when in fact, as you can see here, it might just be like two or three programs that are really driving that postage cost. So you can really isolate that discussion and get focused on what you're talking about. This was travel and training and another line item overall. So just wanted to make sure, as everybody is really remembering how this all came together, and then also thinking about what you can do, the next time you're having a conversation about a line item and you want to drill into, well, what programs really drive this cost? That's the kind of data that you have, it's at your fingertips. This discussion of results, kind of coming back to why are we in business, is the very foundation of priority-based budgeting. Again, we have this theme of community results versus governance results. And for, this is illustrative, I'll get to yours in a second. We see these types of answers to the question, why we're in business. Most every one of our communities says something about economic vitality, producing a safe community, you're sustainable and maintain development. And these are just additional community-oriented results that we continue to see again and again. I'll focus more on this in the third chapter. As differentiated from those internal results of governance, I just want to make sure that everybody remembered, there are two tracks of results, just like two tracks of programs. You have community-oriented results that represent why you offer programs directly to citizens, as differentiated from that internal set of governance results. And for each result, there are a series of definitions meant to be totally comprehensive for all the ways that you could achieve a result. So if you had safe and secure community, you would probably have something around law enforcement, crime reduction, property protection. Some communities talk about safe air and clean drinking water as it relates to a safe community. Certainly in Flint, Michigan, this is a big issue. But in other communities, they say, no, it's not related to achieving a safe community. And for you, you too identified every one of your results and you define them very completely and comprehensively. Where I'll get to in the very end is, it is always worth revisiting these and making sure that they're valid. But I'll try to put that into some context here towards the end of the presentation. It was with these results and definitions and your programs that you approached the scoring process overall. So every program was scored against those results in addition to a few other characteristics that we called the basic program attributes. These are things in addition to results, like the degree of mandate that a program might have, are you required to provide it? Cost recovery, size of population served, change in demand. Those were additional characteristics of programs. And as I was describing this here, program scoring was helpful in order to get to the final quartiles, where your highest scoring programs are quartile one and quartile two, as differentiated from quartile three and quartile four. But it also tagged programs with certain information so that you can ask yourself, what about all the programs that are highly mandated? Can we just look at those? And you can filter on that information. So just to remind everybody how that worked, you know, here's Target Zero. How did it get to be a quartile one program? It wasn't because someone placed it in quartile one and said, I think this program's really important. It got to quartile one as an outcome of scoring. So you can see how that program scored against all of your results over here. Desirable place to live and work, your safety result, transportation and so on, as well as those basic program attributes, if you can see those on the screen. It scored highly. That's how it got to be a quartile one. And then here's bridge maintenance as another example, where it scored highly against those basic program attributes and your results overall. There were two stages to scoring. There's a departmental self-assessment, where they scored their own programs first, and that was followed by a peer review step. And the way that we got to those quartiles, again, differentiating the community side of the house from the internal governance side of the house, was the programs that score the highest are quartile one and quartile two, as differentiated relatively from quartile three and quartile four. Finally, by applying the price of every program, that's how we could get to the final spending array for your quartiles. So that was a quick trip down memory lane. I just wanted to make sure everybody remembered how this all worked and came together. Any questions on the mechanics of priority-based budgeting or thoughts about, you know, how this has evolved over time or where the actual nuts and bolts come into play?
Councilmember Scherbek?
For those of us that are new, is this, is this done biannually, annually, this scoring?
Biannually.
Yeah.
We'll be doing that over the next few months as we get ready to prepare our next biennial budget. We haven't done it in the interim.
Yeah.
Everybody else remember? All right, great, great. Well, thanks, thanks for the question though, because we had a whole slide on questions and comments. So rounding out, this is the last piece, I wanted to come full circle. And I've hit this twice now, this is kind of the warm-up. In the four levels, we talked about what communities are doing with results. And it's not like Kalamazoo set a result to end generational poverty. They incorporated it into a result definition that has more to do with their overall safety, health and wellbeing of their community overall. And they're trying to design these programs to actually go after it, or ending homelessness similarly. Revisited it in the mechanics of PBB, just to remind you, this is the, the results and definitions are so critically important because they drive how programs are scored overall. And it's where, it's where you sit. These are often things that you ran on, this is your vision into the future, what really matters for this community as you think about today and as you think about the future that you're trying to accomplish. And I've been in these conversations, which has been really interesting, results are different from a strategic plan that you might have been involved in in the past. Sometimes strategic plans can be really focused on the initiatives that need improvement or areas that are kind of weak today that need improvement, whereas results, they're similar, but they're not the same. The point of results is, why are we in business comprehensively? What is our role as a, as a service provider in this community? And as I've engaged councils over the years in revisiting your results, this has actually been one way, an indirect way to get to it. So is this company, it's like somewhere close to here, I think? The HQ two discussions are very relevant in Denver, but I think you got the upper hand. So in Amazon, Bezos had this speech that he gave to his own shareholders, and it was really fascinating to us. He said, he's often asked the question, what's going to change in the next 10 years? You know, give me a crystal ball, look out in the future, Jeff, what's going to change? You're a futurist, you know everything that's taking place. And he said, that's an interesting question, but what's more interesting from my seat is to imagine what's not going to change, because you can actually build a business around that. And he says, it's impossible to imagine a future 10 years from now where someone comes up and says, you know, Jeff, I love Amazon, but I just wish the prices were a little higher, and I wish you'd just deliver a little bit more slowly. You know, not going to happen. So it makes it really easy, so to speak, for him to just focus on what's not going to change is, he's always going to be in the business of delivering more and more faster and cheaper. And I think that's really intriguing as a backdrop for you guys. Yes, it's always important to be looking down the road and thinking about what's changing out there in your environment. But just as important, if not more important, is to imagine what's not going to change and what your role will be as local government leaders and what you're going to have to be in the business in. And the point of tonight was not necessarily to open up results and definitions so much as it was to bring them back in front of you and refresh your memories of how important they are, to get them right, to define them completely and comprehensively, and to make sure that they're infused with the kind of criteria against which you want your programs to be scored. Because as Joanne and Rob and staff go forward and score programs again, they're going to come back in quartiles and they're going to reflect their relationship or alignment with these results and definitions as you've created them. A couple other thoughts on this?
Hey, I've got a really quick question.
Oh, yeah.
So Joanne, remind me, have we already, I know at the retreat we discussed results a little bit, but have we kind of set in stone what the results are going into this biennial budget discussion, or?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're, they're set in stone at this point. I think that this is a really good time, early on, to, to review them and come to an agreement as to whether you want to, you know, not certify, but re-validate them. Or if there's something you might want to change or modify. I think this is the perfect time to be doing that before we move down the road towards evaluating how well we're doing meeting those.
So do we have a timeline in place then for that, or?
Well, we could, we could talk about that specific topic at an upcoming council meeting, probably sooner rather than later. And we are hoping to incorporate a public process sometime between now and the end of May, where we can get some public input on that as well.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Smith?
Just to follow up on that, so will you, within, will, we have as part of the discussion just the complete matrix and where, what all the rankings were and everything? And then, well, are we, are you going to provide that and just want us to pick it out and discuss each one as we, if we think it's appropriate? Or, I'm trying to play out how you, how the process is going to work on that, because there's so many and there's so many different, I mean, are you, or is staff going to take our input and then score them against one another?
Okay, I'm not real sure how to answer that. Help me out here, Rob or Chris, if you. Well, I guess what I envisioned and what we did a couple of years ago was I brought the results back to you, which were the, the big overriding results and then all of the, the definitions of how we achieve those in a, in a greater context. And asked you to revalidate, do, is, do those still make sense to you? Are those still important? And are we still going down that road in these different areas to achieve, say, a transportation result? Are these all the ways that you see that we can achieve that result for the community? And then what we do with all of the programs and activities that we identify throughout the city as staff is then we compare those to the results and score them and say, yes, that achieves a high level of that result or it doesn't. But I guess I would bring those results to you in a council setting, and we could just have an open discussion about whether they still resonate for you.
So, and where does the community input factor in, in that linear process?
Well, we, we open it up to, we had a public meeting, this is how we did it before, and where my starting point would be, we had a public meeting where we brought folks in and sort of introduced those results to them and asked for their input on what they thought were maybe the most important or weightier ones. And this was right after we started the Target Zero efforts.
Right, right.
Expecting that, you know, public safety and transportation would be probably more, more on everyone's mind than culture or recreation. We also did a survey, an online survey, where we asked people to, over a span of time, respond and just sort of weigh those, that if you had to, you know, allocate all your resources to one of these results, which one would you choose or which ones would you choose?
So do you do that though, before you come to us with what you think the answer is, or the results, or I should say, not the answer? But, or do you, is that after you've already presented that to us, and then we are taking the community input in to how we react to what you present to us?
I'd actually do it all about the same time.
Okay.
One, because what we didn't do was then try to, we haven't done this as a community, is try to weight the results. Right now, we look at them all as being equally important. And when you get the community input, you have to remember that not a large part of the community responds. So you have to decide, do you want that small portion of the community to really drive and wait to certain results or not? And so far, we've chosen not to, but we've taken that information for what it is, is, you know, another point of view. But I, I had hoped to have all of that done before we get to the point of internally doing the scoring and before we have our budget retreat, so that we would have some information to share with you about the actual programs and how they do or don't meet the results and the different quartiles. I don't think we'll get to the quartile, but we can at least get to maybe the scoring by then.
Councilmember Scherbek?
I'm sorry, I'm still not quite understanding the process. But, so the, the scoring is of the results or the subordinate definitions?
The scoring is of the actual programs.
Against?
Against the results.
Yep. And the results are all equal then? Is that, or?
They're all equal.
Okay.
That's how we, you know, have historically done it. One result, safe and secure community is not more important, not weighted more than...
Not weighted more than connection and involve family-oriented community.
Right, and these subordinate definitions, are they the bubbles in that other? Okay, they're the ones that go around.
The roadmap, getting to
Yeah, okay.
The greater results, and then the programs are all the things that we do on a day-to-day basis.
Right, right, right.
Councilmember Curtis.
So as I remember, the first time, we worked really hard on getting all those bubbles and things defined. And then the, the second time, we sort of looked at it, and we said, mostly we liked our previous work, and we added a few things. So we, we adjusted it a little bit, it's kind of a course correction, but it wasn't a major throw it all out and start over again.
No.
So we, we really felt we had done a pretty good job the first time. So I, I would sort of imagine that this time, we've got two new people who haven't really had all the time to look at it in, in great detail, but we might have, you know, some adjustments. But I, I would say probably most of this is going to stand from the work we've done in the past.
Oh, yeah, I, I expect so. You're not going to take one of these and say, that's not important anymore. But you might, you might have a different way of looking at it, or how you can accomplish it than maybe you did four years ago.
Any other questions? I mean, for what it's worth, from my perspective, I think getting the public input before council kind of goes in and does the final tweaking might, might make a lot of sense, just to hear from the public, and, and recognizing that the people motivated to come to that meeting is a small sample. But, but I think it's important that we hear from the public before we kind of set the definitions, and before you guys start your internal scoring work. But that's just me speaking, so.
No, totally makes sense.
And that's great. I mean, that was part of the direction we were hoping to get into tonight, is just for the rest of the timeline, how you saw the citizen input coming into play. I just had two more slides to, to demonstrate. I think last time, as Joanne mentioned, you did a, a community survey, and that is exactly how we continue to see, whether it's live public meetings, rolling this out online, we're continuing to see that being probably one of your most effective tools. And the choi, the choice would be, you can open up the result level input to say, are we still capturing all the results that, like, you know, Joanne, you're, you're exactly right, at least from our experience, we haven't had a community come back and say, you know, we're, we're no longer in the business of a safe and secure community anymore. And that's the point of the Bezos, you know, what are we, what are we going to be in the business 10 years from now, 20 years from now? You're always going to be in the safe and secure community. And councilmember, I think that's why you noticed the last time around, you probably didn't see a whole lot of change at the result level, or at the result definition, because you did spend, you, you were very thoughtful in working hard on those bubbles to make sure that they're complete. Whereas in a strategic planning exercise, those do tend to change often, because they're more about what needs improvement, and what are the current trends and issues, results and definitions are asking a different question. It's why are we here, so that you can score programs to understand their overall relevance? And so that's, that's a subtle difference. Nevertheless, still important to, to gauge and try to understand from the public, are we missing anything? We worked in Joplin, Missouri, and they had a radical change in their community after the tornado came through, whereas before, they kind of had some stable results, and afterwards, they were all about emergency response and community building and rebuilding. That was a, that was a new result, that just wasn't on the radar, and that's what local government needed to take on for their challenge. This is an area where you can open up the dialogue to understand, are the results complete? Are there any new results that somebody would make mention of for your consideration? And then ultimately, the waitings as well. And the second component of the survey, we'll get into those definitions specifically, to say, are they still defined right? So assuming safe and secure community still has residents here in Kenmore, is it defined how everybody wants it to be defined? Are the, are the result definitions complete, those bubbles? And are there any definitions that are left out of those results? And I think with that feedback, if that's the direction that you want to proceed with, then you all as council can react to that, so that staff can proceed with program scoring. That was the last chapter of my presentation. But that was the whole hope, kind of full circle. We really wanted to give you the big picture flavor of what, the exciting things that people are really doing with this. Secondly, Kendra, to remind you of what you have, you've built all the key ingredients, and then now, as you consider your next steps, just kind of getting some general direction for community involvement, the revisiting of results and definitions, and Joanne, I don't know if you had any final wrap-up points?
No, other than just to point out, I think the, the results are in the agenda packet that you receive for tonight, so they're there for, for your, for your review, reading pleasure, to ponder, to think about. And then Rob and I can, can work to get this on an agenda, where we have a discussion about it, and to plan a public, like an open house, where we invite people in to, to learn about those. And I think we did a little exercise with folks at that last open house that we, we did a couple of years ago, where we asked them to, if you had $100 and seven results, where, where would you spend your money? So we'll, we'll go forward doing that. But if you have any other questions about the process?
Yeah, councilmember Curtis.
Mine kind of relates to that. It's easy to get the, well, to get some public to show up in, in a public meeting. This, the survey, do we have any idea at this time to do any formal kind of a survey? We will reach out in any kind of statistical way to people, and with a certain number of survey participants present of the citizens and all that?
We, I, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I think what we did before, I had, I had an intern help at that time, we did a Survey Monkey, and we advertised it on the website, and then the newspaper, or the newsletter, and left it open for a period of time for, you know, people to, hey, go, go take the survey and respond to it. And I, I don't remember what the response was, it wasn't great, but there were, there were some. And Chris mentioned the city of Benicia recently, and I, I went on their website, and they have a lot of area on the web dedicated to their survey, and it was a lot more comprehensive than what we had done a coup, a few years ago, so I think that we could probably improve our survey outreach and format and questions to be, you know, more thoughtful, and just get it out to as best we can, so that people respond. It's, it is hard to get people to respond.
We can't have people get free Monopoly tickets like in Safeway. That, that'll drive them to answer this survey, I'm sure.
My wife would totally do the survey if their Monopoly piece is involved.
The grandkids would, but they can't vote.
Councilmember Scherbek.
Two things. One, I thought I heard you say just a minute ago, you know, you have the idea of, if you have $100, which results would you give what? Which does imply a prioritization among results. So is that part of the exercise, where they're not all equal? I'm still, I'm still struggling with that question.
That's something we did with the public input. It was just to kind of give them an exercise to do that evening when they came. We didn't do that with the council.
Okay, I mean, how does that inform the work, I guess, is the question? I mean, because that's a prioritization, and then a further prioritization of
We're going down the
Programs within that, so I, how does that work? How does, so that's my first question, I have another one, too.
And I'll take one, one crack at it, too.
Make it for me.
Yeah, okay. So you're, you're thinking correctly, that you can use that data to apply a weighting factor, if you felt like it was
Yeah, exactly.
A, a good sample of your public, and, and it was meaningful to do that. And some communities do, and other communities don't use it for weighting, but they want to use that prioritization, this, the allocation of 700 points, or 700 votes, or 100, to understand if some, if, if the vast majority of the participants come back and had put zero towards a particular result overall, then that's evidence back to you to say, wow, maybe this result is not resonating. Or if it's very low, then you all as council could consider, is it because it's not a result in and of itself? Maybe it's a result definition, where it's not a standalone reason for our very existence, it's a means to an end. That's how we've coached organizations to deal with analyzing that data. But back to the weighting factor, it is, it's legit, if you feel it is, and we can run the scores either way, that's been one thing that we've been able to do, is, you know, what if we apply the weighting factor? It's not like it takes a quartile four program and vaults it to quartile one. The sensitivity is, is not that dramatic, it's usually tinkering with those boundaries around the quartiles.
Okay, so, second question is, because I wasn't involved in the generation of the definitions, but I did notice, and I've been trying to wrap my head around it, a lot of overlap in the definition bubbles from result to result. So how, how, how do we think about that?
It's, that's, that's a, that's, it's appropriate. So the, the philosophy and the design of the process itself, if you think about, put yourself in Denver, Colorado for a second, okay? And it snows there, we have this precipitation that turns cold. You gotta remove it. And so snow removal, in most organizations' minds, it, it has an impact on your transportation result, because it keeps the roads clear, and it would score very highly towards that result. And that, at the same time, someone might ask, well, isn't it also keeping people safe? Because if we plow the roads, it reduces traffic accidents, and it's, it's not just a transportation issue, it's a safety issue. And so it has a crossover impact on a safe community. And in some times of our winter, certainly in Midwest, it has an economic impact, that if we don't plow the roads, or don't have access to businesses, and it's not a dramatic impact, but it has some, and the airport's shut down, or the roads are impassable, our economic vitality result actually gets an impact, so.
I understand that, I guess my, so you're, what you just said was talking about programs and how they overlap results. What I'm talking about is how the definitions cross results.
Yep.
Does a program only lie in one definition? Is that why you're saying that?
I was using an illustrative example of a, of a program that would meet definitions, and those definitions would have crossover into safe community, economic vitality, and transportation and mobility, in my simplistic case. So the, so imagine the opposite. If we tried to silo the results, the definitions within results, and said accessible, free-flowing traffic is only a transportation definition.
Okay, yeah.
Then we would lose out on the fact that it's, that it's also true that it's a safety issue as well. And so to have that crossover is actually, it's legitimate, it's right, it's a bang-for-the-buck issue. If you put resources into something, whether it's snow removal or whatever, that has an impact on not one, but multiple results, you get a high rate of return, it's a leverage on that definition.
Maybe what, what you don't realize, because I didn't explain it very well, is every program is not evaluated against one result, it's evaluated against every result.
Yeah, right.
So if it, if it scores highly and influences several results in a very positive way, then, you know, it tends to be then seeing it come, or come out of this process a really high-scoring program.
Councilmember Smith, and then we'll have councilmember Marshall.
Yeah, I, from a, just an allocation of staff time, I would, I would rather, not that we can't do both, but I would much rather see more emphasis placed on something we could maybe do out, online for outreach than, I think it's great to have an exercise here in City Hall, and, you know, for the six people that show up for it or something. But I just feel like that we have a lot more exposure now, online, and our reach is much broader than it was even two years ago, let alone four years ago. And I would say that that's, that's a great tool to try to, if we're going to put a, you know, prioritize our resources on that outreach, I would like to see it more online.
Councilmember Marshall.
And how much does the PBB program cost, or does it cost anything?
I'm trying to remember what it costs. It does cost something. I think the contract for the year's worth of access to the tools, and all the processes, and the training that goes with it, is it $20?
$30,000.
$20,000.
Councilmember Curtis.
So thinking about the, the concept of paired comparisons, in essence, putting and weighting or prioritizing things. So in essence, we do that with every program, so let's say there's 500 programs. For us to take the time to do that at the result level, and do a paired comparison for every result, I think would be too time-consuming, more detailed than necessary. And I guess the, the way I kind of look at it, if you just look at the high level, what's in the, the four quartiles, does it make sense? Are we kind of getting the kind of results we thought we should get? And if we are, there's no reason to make it more complicated than it needs to be. So that'd be my high-level way of looking at it. Say, does this make sense? And I think it does, as, again, but I've had the advantage of watching it for a couple cycles here, to say, it feels like we're on track. So, so I wouldn't want the council to spend the time to go through all those results and put the, give different weights to each of the areas.
We like that, too. I mean, the, in terms of, at the end of your work, you want to look through quartile three, quartile four, and ask, does it, does it make sense to you that these? And if it doesn't, that's also good to talk about. You know, why is there a program that is scoring highly, or not scoring highly, and it's surprising to you? What does that mean? If you understand the logic of the system, it, it means either it was scored in correctly, or you're missing a result, or a key characteristic, that in your mind, it should score, it should be very important, but you're missing a criteria to evaluate it against. That's like how to evaluate this, this system.
Well, that's why I think it's so important that we get the definitions nailed down, because that's what drives all of this.
Yep, right.
One of the things I, I would ask you, Chris, before, before we break, to let the council know about is that, you know, over the years, as, as this whole process has evolved, and they've matured and improved the process and the tools, now there, there is something that's more outward-facing, and so it's not all just internally staff-driven, and then you get a result, but a way of presenting this publicly, and putting a public face on it. Could you just describe that real quick, so that, I think that would be of interest?
No problem. So I'm wondering if I can, I'm not sure that I'm on the internet. No problem. I was going to launch one, a public-facing tool, but I'll make sure that you all can access this. In fact, if you go to Toledo's website, there's priority-based budgeting, you click on their link, and it launches their public-facing portal. And it's, it's fun, it's not like Monopoly piece is fun, but it's fun. And basically, how this got started was, we had communities like Shawnee, Kansas, saying their council, for all the work that we just put into this, one of the reasons you did it was because you wanted to demonstrate to your citizens how genuinely and how seriously you're taking resource allocation, you're entrusted with their funds, you're trying to meticulously understand how they're allocated to programs, and how those programs score against results. I mean, you're, you're putting in a lot of work, so how can you demonstrate to them how you're trying to be good stewards of the resources? So we designed an outward-facing portal to do just that. And the, the Open PBB data site, so if you're at all familiar or talking about open data, it's a spin on it to present this information out there, where it's not accessible at the level where you can go and see, where did Joanne and Rob allocate their time to their programs? You can't get down to the employee level, but you can still see the four quartiles, you can drill into it and see the programs, you can filter on it and say what programs are bringing in revenue, which programs are mandated, and you can also see the multi-year, so you can gain some sort of appreciation for where the city has been reinvesting resources over time. And it, it's really interesting. So, I mean, for any of us who have been involved in trying to engage the public, and, and help them become more aware, try to be transparent, it's definitely hitting the mark on that front, where people are appreciative of the data that's out there. At the same time, what's been probably most interesting to us is that there is, there's reports back from our clients who have it online, I think Toledo, Rapid City, South Dakota, Longmont, Colorado. Rob has their open data site online, and I think Kalamazoo's about to launch theirs. It's, it's been decent interest from the citizens, more interest from other organizations, like your private sector businesses, your nonprofits, your public sector potential partners. partners. And again, we weren't necessarily anticipating that, but we're reacting to it to say, it's pretty cool, why are they interested? They're interested because they want to form a partnership with you. So what, what Toledo had, had done is they took their, their live open data portal and they allowed outside organizations to say, here's what I'm interested in talking with you about, I'm also in the street sweeping business, I would like to talk about your street sweeping program. And they can submit their inquiry, and why wouldn't that work for citizens as well? Maybe they're interested in a particular program overall. But it's pretty cool. Another thing that's been nice about it, and Joanne, I'm glad that you brought this up, in Joplin, Missouri, they are really wanting to help the public understand how they're making these decisions, so in their council meetings, they will launch the open data site and show them, hey, we're talking tonight about increasing wages for cops, and we want to show you exactly where that fits in. It's to our police patrol program, and this program is quartile one, and here are the salaries and benefits that go along with that particular program. So, it's not just, do our people need more money? It's, it's a high-priority program that we're thinking of, you know, we need to retain our current employees and here's how we're going to do it. So it gives you a nice context and framework to have those discussions about programs in your public meetings overall. That's been cool.
Thanks.
Sure.
Do we have any other comments or questions? All right, Chris, Joanne, thank you so much for your time. I think this has laid a good foundation for the beginning of our budget discussion this year. It's going to be fun having new people to work with it on. I think we'll get some new perspectives, I'm looking forward to that. Seeing no further business for the council, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joanne.